Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lu Zhen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor World. Quorum is present.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Pastor Kiki D'Uffel Floreson, invited by Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor. Counselor Kiki, I mean Counselor Kiki giving you a new job. Pastor Kiki, we welcome you up. Thank you for all of your work yesterday with the Haitian rally. Thank you for being just a family member and just so important to all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. So, I have the honor of introducing you all to Pastor Kiki, who is not only a good friend of mine and an honorable resident of District 5, but someone that does so much for our city, not just my district. Quick introduction, Pastor Kiki is a founder of True Alliance Center, a Haitian-led organization established to advocate for the Haitian community. Under his leadership, this faith-based charitable organization has actively promoted advocacy in the Haitian community regarding education, housing, immigration, health, and economic development. But as our Madam President mentioned, he does a lot more than that. And yesterday, I was able to join the Madam President and Pastor Kiki for a rally behind the Haitian community, and I thought it was just perfect timing to invite him to do our opening clergy this morning and our opening prayer. So Pastor Kiki, the mic is yours.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Peppin, and thank you, Madam President's daughter. Thank you just to be with all of you. I want to thank all the city councilors who stayed strongly with the Haitian community. As you know, immigrants make America stronger. Thank you so much for all your help. And I've seen one of my colleagues from Equity Now and Beyond, Claire. Thank you. Congratulations as well. We are about to pray. Can you withstand? Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude for this opportunity to gather as public servants dedicated to the people of Boston. Your word reminds us in Proverbs 11:14, "Where there is no guidance, a people falls; but in abundance of counselors, there is safety." We thank you for the leadership and counsel of these council members, and we ask for your divine wisdom to guide them through every discussion and decision made today. Lord, bless each council member with the spirit of unity, for as your word says in Psalm 133, verse 1, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity! May they work together harmoniously, setting aside differences for the greater good, grant them patience, understanding, and mutual respect, so that their efforts may lead to just and equitable outcomes for all." We also pray for discernment and integrity as they carry out their work, remembering Micah 6:8, "He has shown you, O mortal, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you, to act justly, love mercy, and work humbly with your God. May their decisions rooted in justice, mercy, and humility, with a heart for those who are vulnerable and in need." We pray for your peace to cover the discussions, as your word promises in Philippians 4:7, "And the peace of God which transcends all understanding will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus." May your peace list them through every challenge, and may your grace be with them in every decision. Finally, Lord, we ask that this session reflect your love for the people of Boston, and that their work today will build a foundation for fairness, compassion, and hope for future generations in accordance with your word that says, "Seek the peace and prosperity of the city, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." I, many people, address you by many names. I pray to your precious son named Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Kiki, for that invocation, for all of your work. Counselor Peppin, thank you for inviting my second father, Pastor Kiki. I also want to thank all of my colleagues who showed up yesterday at the rally and all of my, not only my colleagues, but their staff. We could have had the council meeting yesterday. It was very heartening to see the support and the solidarity from this council. So, thank you. Today, we are onto two presentations, but I know that I would like to amend the record. Mr. Clerk, if you could please amend the attendance record to reflect that. Counselor Tanya Fernandes Anderson is now with us. Thank you. We are now onto two presentations, both by Counselor Mejia. First, Runway for Moms, on their 10th anniversary, and Boston Women's Fund, also their 40th anniversary. So, Counselor Mejia, you have the floor, and five minutes for each presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, and I also just want to thank you for allowing me to occupy space for two very important groups that are near and dear to me today. So, I am really excited. Before I even start reading like my prepared remarks, I just want to acknowledge that before I walked into this chamber, and I said this story earlier, I was a parent who was just fed up with our educational system. I was a resident that was tired of politicians coming around my way asking me for their vote, and then I wouldn't see them anymore. And through that work, I created two initiatives here in the city of Boston, Determined Divas and C-Plan, the Collaborative Parent Leadership Action Network. And at the time, when I was just organizing sometimes in church basements with no resources, just a lot of heart and hustle, there was a woman who attended some of my events, and she saw something in me that nobody else did, and invested in me. For the first time, anyone invested in me in that way and provided me with some seed funding so that I can grow my vision. And because of this woman, I am here today. Because of this woman who saw something in me and created a pathway for me to be a disruptor, to be an agitator, I just want to say thank you, Natania Craig, from the bottom of my heart. We see you. That's right, you better soak it up. This is your day, okay? So, it is a profound honor to stand here before you today as we recognize September 26, 2024, as Boston Women's Fund Day, in celebration for its historic 40th anniversary. Forty, y'all. Today, we just don't celebrate an organization, we celebrate a movement that for decades has lifted the voices and leadership of women, girls, and gender expansive individuals. Since its founding in 1984, the Boston Women's Fund has become a beacon of hope, resilience, and transformation. As a people-first fund, it has consistently invested in the heart of grassroots activism, ensuring that those who face the greatest challenges have the resources and support to create lasting change. Over the past 40 years, the Boston Women's Fund has led the charge in advancing social, racial, gender, and economic justice by providing financial support to initiatives that confront systemic inequities in Boston. The fund understands that real change happens when we invest in those most impacted by injustice. It has continuously worked to amplify their voices, invest in their leadership, and create spaces where they can be a driving force behind progress. So, with that, I am so incredibly just in awe of all of the 40 leaders that are going to be recognized tomorrow at the 40th Anniversary Gala that's gonna happen, because for those who are tuning in... And there's one woman here in particular, because there's 40 of y'all, though. I'm not gonna call everybody out, but there's one woman in particular here who was a founding member of C-Plan, which was the Collaborative Parent Leadership Action Network, and she went from being a founding member and a volunteer to a consultant, to now the executive director of C-Plan, Ivalis Caraballo. And this is what it looks like when we invest in each other. And so, this is what the work is all about. So, in my appreciation and gratitude to Natania Craig, Alexandria August, and their team for the work that they do every day for our residents, today we honor your legacy, the Boston Women's Fund. We also renew our commitment. The Boston Women's Fund shows us that by investing in the leadership of women and gender diverse individuals, we are creating a future where everyone has the opportunity to flourish. On behalf of the city council, I am proud to present this resolution officially recognizing September 26 as Boston Women's Fund Day. Thank you to the Boston Women's Fund for your commitment to justice, and here's to many more years of transformative impact, both here in the city and beyond. Natania Craig, please come on down. Thank you so much for the incredible honor. Standing here, receiving this from Counselor Mejia, makes this moment especially meaningful. Your leadership and dedication to our communities resonates deeply with the mission of the Boston Women's Fund. You are a representative. You are BWF. To each city councillor here, your work is everlasting and ongoing, and on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Boston Women's Fund, our staff, and our entire community, thank you for this recognition. You have a partner in the Boston Women's Fund. As we celebrate 40 years, I talk fast, y'all, I promise. As we celebrate 40 years of radical giving, today is not just about us, it's about the visionary woman who paved the way. I want to take a moment to honor our founding mothers by saying their names. Rachel Berger, Cynthia Chin, Jean Entine, Renee Scott Gray, Marion Lille, Brenton Likes, Kip Tierney. Forty years ago, these women imagined a different way of giving, a radical approach to philanthropy. They believed in something revolutionary. That true change starts when we put community at the center. Their vision has been our guide and the secret to our success. We understand our role is to stand behind the experts with lived experience, women, girls, gender expansive folks of color. We fund their vision, their ideas, their innovation, their solutions, because they are the architects of change. The secret to our success is in sharing and not hoarding power and resources. We practice participatory grant making, swinging doors wide open instead of guarding them as gatekeepers. We see leaders for their full selves, y'all, and their humanity, and work alongside them, eliminating a toxic top-down approach. And we have 40 years of receipts to prove it. Over the years, executive directors have changed, staff has come and gone, board members' terms have been up, but the values of our founding mothers have remained constant. They have been our compass when we've lost our way or needed refocusing on what truly matters. So, today, in honoring them, I am honoring all of you who are fighting for liberation. I honor our communities who are priorities, Black and Brown and historically marginalized communities, low-income folks, migrants and refugees, LGBTQIA+ community, the disabled, our elders, our young people, all who are often left out of mainstream philanthropy. Because our fund from the beginning centered people over their problems. So, next year, on September 26, it is the People's Day, as we are the People's Fund. This year, our theme has been liberation, and tomorrow night, we are honoring 40 incredible liberation grassroots leaders. We deeply understand that liberation is just as linked as the chains of oppression and injustice, and none of us are free until all of us are free. So, when we are asked what our plan is, we declare that our next stop and our only stop is liberation. We are on the move, y'all, and we want you to join us. As we work together to strive towards racial, economic, social, and gender justice. Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Madam. I hope I read fast enough. This recognition means everything to us. It gave us a burning to remind ourselves that we were the first fund ever here, and we are here to stay. Thank you for the honor. Thank you for the honor. Can we give it up one more time for Natania Craig, y'all? And we need all the 40 leaders to come here and occupy their space, because we're gonna take a group photo with my colleagues. Come on down, ladies. Come on down. I said, y'all, we're gonna occupy space today, right? I told y'all we're gonna take over the chamber, right? Let's go, all 40 of y'all. And my colleagues, we're gonna make it work. We're all gonna get here, y'all. And if you don't want to be in it, it's all good, you can take the photos from over there, but we want everybody who wants to come on through.
Come on up here, too. There's space up here.
Yeah, there's space.
There's space up here. There is space up here. DJ, DJ. There's plenty of picture people.
Get it? In other words, get in here, get in here. Come on, staff. Let's go, y'all. The people behind the scenes are usually the ones who are doing the most work. So, we need to get the staff up in here, too. Let's go. All means all. And everybody, okay, before the president should... Let's go.
Does everybody have a window?
Does everybody, everybody go? One.
Liberation!
Liberation! And then I gave you yours, right?
This was mine, which was mine.
Yes, that one's yours.
This was mine. That's your.
Congratulations. All right, all right, you guys. All right. All right, so one more. El momento que hemos estado esperando. Aquí voy a hablar un poquito de español también, porque tenemos muchas madres aquí que son hispanas, y hay que darse cuenta que cuando nosotros estamos aquí estamos ocupando un espacio, ¿verdad? Y hay que celebrar nuestra cultura. And for those watching at home, get yourself a translator, Google translator, okay? All right. So, today, I'm very grateful to present this resolution recognizing September 29, 2024, as Runway for Mom Day, celebrating incredible 10-year milestone for an organization that has poured so much heart and love into the empowerment of mothers and Latinas in our community. For the past decade, Runway for Mom has created spaces where they can see their worth and embrace it fully. It has given moms a chance to grow, to be celebrated, to heal, and to find their voices. A special recognition goes to Marisol Camilo, the visionary leader behind this transformative organization. Marisol's commitment and passion has fueled the growth of Runway for Mom, and held her dedication uplifting Latina moms has touched countless lives. She has been a source of strength and inspiration, ensuring that every mother feels seen, valued, and empowered. We also want to acknowledge the dedication and hard work of the many women who have embraced the vision of Runway for Mom. These women actively engage in the program with a supportive community and encourage others carrying the vision and values of Runway for Mom with them. When I look at the work of Runway for Mom does, I see so much hope. This organization doesn't just acknowledge the challenges mothers face, it lifts them up and creates opportunities for them to grow socially, emotionally, spiritually, and physically. Now, I'm going to translate for our Latina moms here, porque bien importante que ustedes entiendan todo lo que está pasando aquí, que hoy quería aprovechar en este momento para reflejar sobre todo el trabajo que ha hecho Marisol Camilo en todo lo que tiene que ver con Runway for Mom. Aquí en Boston ya tienes 10 años, pero son 15 años porque comenzó en Providence, Rhode Island. So, es un logro tremendo que todo el trabajo que hizo Marisol es para que nosotras como madres podamos tomar un tiempecito para reflejar y también ser más fuertes emocionalmente, físicamente, y espiritualmente. Y yo como madre, voy a dejar de hablar de mi corazón, y yo como madre que estoy participando por primera vez profundamente, Marisol, te quiero dar la gracia porque me da una oportunidad para yo entender que yo también merezco tiempo, que yo también merezco un tiempo para reflejar y para empoderarme un poquito más, y todo lo que tú haces aquí en la comunidad de Boston y el desarrollo que tú has hecho con este proyecto para que nosotros como madres podemos apoyarlo unas a las otras, eso desarrollando comunidad, eso celebrando las madres. Y te quiero dar la gracia a ti y a todas las madres que están aquí hoy, porque yo sé que no ha sido nada fácil, con todos los ensayos y todo el compromiso, pero sabemos que su labor, ¿verdad? Sabemos que vamos a poner no solamente Runways for Mom en el mapa, pero vamos a inspirar a las otras madres que vean que ellos también merecen esta oportunidad. So, hoy, Marisol, es el día 29, va a ser nombrado Runways for Mom aquí en la ciudad de Boston. Venga para acá, dice una cuantapalabra, y las madres también, ven que vamos a tirar una foto. Venga, Marisol. Vengan todita, que Marisol va a hablar, después vamos a tirar una foto. Sí, todita, vengan toditas, vengan toditas. I'm telling them all to come down so that we can save time, and I know you're happy because I'm trying to speed things up. Eso quiere decir, Runways for Mom, caminen rápido, 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 rápido. Runaway, runaway, strut, strut, strut. Let's give it up to all of the beautiful mothers. En nuestra líder, que va a decir una cuantapalabra aquí, y después nos tiramos una foto.
Thank you so much. I am so proud, I'm so happy, because we represent mom. We are working with mom, because mom is the heart of the family. If mom is well, whole family is well. That's why we are working with mom. Ten years, you can say easy 10 years, but it's not easy. It's a lot of work, but God is good all the time. God helped us and continually helped us for, I don't know how many times, but when God said, "We are working," I don't know cuánto tiempo, pero cuando Dios diga, "Aquí vamos a estar," para decirle, "Mamá, eres importante, te apreciamos, mereces," como dice Julia, "tiempo para ti." Y decirte, Julia, gracias, gracias. Es un verdadero honor saber que eres latina y saber que no ha sido fácil para ti abrir camino, pero que con nuestra comunidad te seguiremos apoyando.
Come on, colleagues. Get yourself a translator. Everybody needs one of them in their lives these days, so Google it. Come on, colleagues, una foto. Google should have been investing in... Todo uno se ve. Ah, okay, okay. Sí, sí, sí.
Thank you. Is everyone here?
Oh, wow. So, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Eso, eso, no, yo me lo llevo para yo...
Sí.
No, 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 te pide muchas cosas.
Counselor Mejia, thank you for bringing all those amazing, powerful, beautiful women into this chamber. Boston Women's Fund, looking forward to celebrating with you tomorrow, 40 years, and Runway for Moms, thank you, which is gracias. This is your second time in this chambers. I hope you always feel welcome and at home here with the Boston City Council. We are now on to our first order of business, which is the approval of a minute from the meeting of September 18, 2024. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1430?
Docket number 1430, message in order for your approval, in order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate in the amount of $2,225,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study and schematic design associated with the project for the Paul Agassi Shaw Charles H. Taylor Elementary School in Mattapan, 02126. This includes the payment of all costs incidental related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Docket number 1430, which requires two votes per charter requirement, will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1431?
Docket number 1431, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,983,872 in the form of a grant for the Strengthening Mobility and Revolutionizing Transportation Grant awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the digitizing of Boston's curves via machine learning, promoting transparency, workforce development, and equitable green policy project.
Thank you. Docket number 1431 will be referred to the committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1432?
Docket number 1432, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $175,000 in the form of a grant for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the acquisition and installation of four direct current fast-charging electric vehicle stations at four Boston municipal parking lots.
Thank you. Docket number 1433 will be referred to the committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1434?
Docket number 1434, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the acquisition and installation of four direct current fast-charging electric vehicle stations at four Boston municipal parking lots.
Thank you. Docket number 1433 will be referred to the committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1434?
Docket number 1434, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the BPS Sunday's Pilot Support Grant awarded by the Boston Foundation, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the BPS Sunday's Cultural Museum Access Pilot Program.
Thank you. Docket number 1434 will be referred to the committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1435?
and Equitable Justice Grant Program awarded by the Target Corporation to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the youth and police initiative, which provides police with the skills and tools necessary to understand, deal with troubled youth, and gives troubled youth new ways to understand, perceive, and deal with police authority.
Thank you. Docket number 1432 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1433?
Docket number 1433, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $167,000, $167 and $104 in the form of a grant for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the acquisition and installation of four direct current fast-charging electric vehicle stations at four Boston municipal parking lots.
Thank you. Docket number 1433 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1434?
Docket number 1434, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the BPS Sundays Pilot Support Grant awarded by the Boston Foundation to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the BPS Sundays Cultural Museum Access Pilot Program.
Thank you. Docket number 1434 will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 1435 through 1443?
Docket number 1435, communication was received by the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the South End Urban Renewal Area, project number Mass R-56, with respect to parcel 35 and so-called parcels 35A and 35B. Docket number 1436, notice received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of July 10, 2024. Docket number 1437, notice received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 7, 2024. Docket number 1438, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 11, 2024. Docket number 1439, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Joan Romano as co-chair of the Boston AFME Council 93 AFL-CIO Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 10, 2025. Docket number 1440, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Alice Brown as an ex-official trustee of the Boston Groundwater Trust. Docket number 1441, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Henry Vitale as an ex-official trustee of the Boston Groundwater Trust. Docket number 1442, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Robert Consalvo as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust. And docket number 1443, notice received from the auditing department providing the fiscal year 2025 payroll allotment schedules for all city departments.
Thank you. Dockets number 1435 to 1442 will be placed on file. Docket number 1443 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. We are now on to matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0651?
Docket number 0651, order for a hearing to discuss the need for all our youngest children in the universal pre-kindergarten program are receiving their special education services.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Councilor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Education held a public hearing on docket number 0651 on Monday, September 23, 2024, to discuss the need that all our youngest children in the universal pre-kindergarten program are receiving their special education services. This matter was sponsored by Councilors Erin Murphy, Liz Braden, and Ben Weber, who were all in attendance. We were also joined by our colleagues, Councilor Enrique Pepin, Ed Flynn, and John Fitzgerald. The committee also received a letter of absence from Council President Rusi Lujen. The committee heard testimony from two members of the administration, Tiara Diaz, Executive Director of Early Childhood for Boston Public Schools, and Kristen McSwain, Director of Office of Early Childhood. The committee additionally invited Mary Skipper, the Superintendent of Boston Public Schools, and Kay Seal, Chief of Specialized Services for the Boston Public Schools. As Chair of the Education Committee, I emphasize the importance of ensuring that every child in Boston, especially our youngest learners in universal pre-K, has access to the special education services they need to succeed. Early intervention is critical in shaping a child's educational journey, and we must ensure Boston Public Schools are equipped to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. During the hearing, we discussed whether we are meeting these needs adequately and how we can better support families through this process. As Chair of the Committee on Education, I would like to extend my appreciation to the sponsors for this hearing order, and as Chair, I recommend that this docket should remain in committee at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Santana. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy as sponsor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chair, for holding this important hearing. You summarized it nicely. It was an important hearing that we need to discuss, making sure that all of our students who are either identified going into or identified once in our universal pre-K seats are receiving the services they need. But I did want to highlight that despite Superintendent Skipper and Kay Seal, the Head of Special Education, who could have answered many of our questions more in-depth and directly, were invited, but we found out right as the meeting was starting that they weren't attending, and I know you were not aware of that also. So thank you for keeping it in committee so we could hold another hearing to continue this important conversation.
Thank you. Docket number 0651 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0907, 1106, 1109, 1172, 1176, 1276, 1278 to 1281, 1283, and 1284? It's going to be a lot of reading.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0907, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for childhood obesity prevention and environmental health sustainability awarded by the United States Conference of Mayors to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood Development. The grant will fund and support programs that engage community members and promote or stimulate behavior change in childhood obesity prevention and environmental health and sustainability. Docket number 1106, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $165,000 in the form of a grant for the mayor's Office of Human Services Connect, Learn, and Explore Initiative awarded by the Boston Children's Hospital to be administered by the Office of Human Services. The grant will fund youth sports and swim activities in partnership with Boston Public Schools. Docket number 1109, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $22,500 in the form of a grant for the Childcare Licensing Support Grant awarded by the United Way to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund stipends for individuals who have completed the family childcare licensing support training and have opened their businesses. Docket number 1172, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Senior Save Program Grant awarded by the Boston Charitable Trust Fund to be administered by the mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund the Heating System Replacement Program for eligible senior citizen homeowners in Boston. Docket number 1176, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $11,600 in the form of a grant for the ESCROW Mitigation Activities awarded to the city of Boston to be administered by the Boston Center for Youth and Families. The grant will fund to pay contractors for mitigation activities. Docket number 1276, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2232,152 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III C Nutrition Services Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1278, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,736,520 in the form of a grant for the State Fiscal Year 25 Council on Aging Formula Allocation awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund social and healthcare services for 115,768 older adults in the city of Boston at $15 per person, according to the 2020 census data for UMass-Boston Donahue Institute. Docket number 1279, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,038,243 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III B Supportive Services awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund home-based support services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1280, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $530,999 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III E Family Caregiver Support Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund caregiver services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1281, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $461,143 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III A Administration Grant awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund costs for the administration of Title III programs. Docket number 1283, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and spend the amount of $177,271 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III O'Budsman Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund consumer protection programs to improve long-term services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1284, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and spend the amount of $84,058 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Title III D Disease Prevention and Health Promotion awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund services that older adults in Boston to prevent illness and manage chronic conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We appreciate you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy, the Chair on Strong Women, Communities, and Families. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Clerk, for all of that. I'd like to thank Councilor Flynn and Councilor Braden, who attended this hearing. We held a, the committee held a hearing on Monday, September 23, to discuss various grants that were all just read into the record to be administered by the Office of Human Services, Office of Early Childhood, the Mayor's Office of Housing, and the Age Strong Commission. There was a lot of grants and money that were in my committee, and so we held one hearing. All of the department heads came so we could discuss them all at once, so I'm happy we were able to get through all of them at this hearing. The committee heard testimony on behalf of the administration from panelists, which included Kristin McSwain, the Senior Advisor and Director of the Office of Early Childhood, Jose Masso, the Chief Office of Human Services, Karen Rabaza, Director of the Boston Home Center within the Mayor's Office of Housing, and Emily Shea, the Age Strong Commissioner. Chief Masso testified on dockets 1106, 1176, in explaining that docket 1106 will support collaboration between human services in the Boston Public Schools to ensure that all young people know how to swim. I know something that we all on this council have been advocating for. And docket 1176 will fund continued mitigation efforts specific to the piping clover population on the beach, as you know, Councilor Flynn, that has closed the beach for a long time at the Crowley Recreation Center. Director McSwain testified on docket 0907 and 1109, in explaining that 0907 will support childhood obesity prevention by funding the expansion of sports programming for youth targeting three- to six-year-olds. And thank you, Councilor Braden, you brought up the concern, and I'm always likely to advocate for your neighborhood, wondering where the soccer programs were being held and how can we expand it to make sure that all neighborhoods are getting access to these supports for our children. And docket 1109 will go towards the Childcare Apprenticeship Fund, which supports family childcare providers who want to start a business, and we had good conversation around how do we support the licensing and the expansion of universal pre-K seats going forward. Director Rabaza testified on docket 1172, explaining that the grant will support the Senior Save Program to replace failing and insufficient heating systems, which is a good time for the winter and making sure our seniors' homes have proper heating systems. Commissioner Shea had the bulk of the dockets, and it was explained that docket 1278 is awarded to the commission each year for being the city of Boston's agency on aging and the funds, the number of department staff among the programming initiatives, she explained. And the Title III grants that will be used to support programs that support older adults, including important nutrition services, supportive services, caregiver support, disease prevention, and health promotion. Specifically, it was explained that docket 1276 Title III C funding will support congregate male sites for older adults, as well as the citywide Males on Wheels program for older adults. There were other senior programs and initiatives under all of these grants that are important supports for our seniors. The council is quiet about the Shine Program and the O'Budsman Program and the swim programs for youth ages three and six. The administration explained that the Shine Program is not funded by the city but a federal and state source, and further assured that the committee that the governor's recent veto of $1 million did not defund the Shine Program completely. And regarding the other program, the administration explained that it is coordinated with Ethos, which we all know is an important nonprofit organization that works directly with many of our seniors across the city, and it supports volunteers assigned to different long-term care facilities, and they actually go into all of these facilities and knock on the doors of our seniors who live in these facilities to offer them support and let them know that that support is there if they need it. And regarding the swim programs for children ages three to six, the administration explained that this past summer, the city offered three programs reaching 100 children across the city, and they hope to expand that program going forward. I will not go into the summary. I think that Clerk did a good job explaining it when you read them, but I will just highlight, and thank you, Megan Kavanaugh, for updating. Since these were brought and filed originally, some of the totals of the grants have changed, and those are in red, so we have updated the totals to make sure that they are accurate. And that is all we need to say on that. But as the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion in formal action. At this time, my recognition to the full council will be that docket 0907, 1106, 1109, 1172, 1176, and 1278 ought to pass. And that docket 1276, 1279, 1280, 1281, 1283, and 1284 ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy, and thank you for holding the hearing on these really important grants. We will take each grant one by one. The Chair of the Committee, unless anyone has anything that they'd like to say on this matter? The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 0907. All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0907 is passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1106. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1106 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1109. All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 1109 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1172. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1172 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1176. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1176 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1276 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1276 has passed in a new draft. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1278. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1278 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1279 in a new draft. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1279 has passed in a new draft. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1280 in a new draft. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1280 has passed in a new draft. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1281 in a new draft. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1281 has passed in a new draft. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1283 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1283 has passed in a new draft. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities... The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passes docket number 1284 in a new draft. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1284 has passed in a new draft. Thank you again, Mr. Clerk, and thank you again, Council Murphy. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1444?
Document number 1444. Councilor Fernandez Anderson offered the following. Order for a hearing to standardize testing as a graduation requirement.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counselor, am I allowed to add a Counselor who's not present?
Who's not present, no, but I see your intent to add her. Should she walk in during, by the end of it, we will add her, and if not, we'll circle back and add her.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Mahiha.
Last week, our office hosted a lunch and learned during which we shared our D7 Action Plan. The D7 Action Plan comprises seven key issues, key issue areas targeted at addressing some of the district's historic and deeply rooted systemic inequities, which I have come to call it domains. One of the seven domains in the action plan is education, and you can't talk about systemic inequities in education without talking about standardized testing. Everybody knows by now that I love data and metrics. We need benchmarks that measure our progress, so we know how to make adjustments over time to improve educational outcomes, but the quality of the data we obtain through standardized tests like the MCAS call into question how effective the process really is. For example, most English language learners are required to take the MCAS regardless of their English proficiency, raising serious questions about how well we support students in BPS who speak a language other than English at home, a full 30% of the student population. However, the biggest issue students face when taking the MCAS is its use as a graduation requirement. 700 students each year who would otherwise be eligible would, were it not for the MCAS, don't receive a diploma because they didn't pass the exam. With the November 5th election coming, where voters will be able to vote on question two, to say if they want to keep the MCAS graduation requirement, the time has come for the council to unpack this issue and give residents, parents, teachers, and students and the opportunity, as well as my colleagues, to speak about standardized testing. I look forward to this hearing and to working alongside my colleagues and Mr. Chair of Education Committee, hopefully to host a speedy hearing so that we can allow community to have a voice, with respects to my colleague who's also brought forth her own position as well. Looking forward to an open discussion, hopefully hearing all sides of things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to my colleague, Council Fernandez Anderson, for entering into this conversation. It's a really important moment for the City Council to have this conversation, and I'm really excited to take part, so please add my name.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? So what we'll do, seeing that Council Mahiha is not yet here, at the end when we, if there are any additions, I'll see if she'd like to be added as a, okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Docket number 1444 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1445?
Document number 1445, Councilor Flynn and Murphy offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss providing $15 million towards residential taxpayers in need of relief.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn, you have the floor.
I'm filing this hearing order to discuss providing $15 million towards 35,000 Boston residential taxpayers most in need of relief, as we consider the wider economic context impacting property taxes across the city. It is important to discuss the administration's recent proposal of $15 million to help small businesses that may be impacted. I want us to instead explore whether there can be a more reasonable means-tested policy approach that targets relief to over 35,000 Boston residential taxpayers most in need of relief, and that we're trying to protect. Residential property tax values in Boston have increased by 19% since the last quarter of 2021, whereas commercial property sales prices in Boston have fallen by more than 30% since the last quarter of 2023. According to the U.S. Census, the latest median price per square foot for residential property is $657. Commercial buildings, it is $407. The administration's tax shift proposal was said to be aimed at protecting seniors and working families from dramatic increases and keep residents in their home. However, there is an analysis that while homes with assessed value under 1.5 will stand to save on average about $400 per year in property taxes, high-value residential properties with assessed values of over $5 million will have their property tax cut, on an average, by about $10,000. And 9% of home listings are priced over $5 million in Boston. That would mean the commercial properties worth less than $400 per square foot would have to subsidize residential properties worth more than five times as much per square foot. The administration has recently discussed appropriating $15 million annually to help small businesses that will be impacted by their proposal. Instead, maybe we could discuss and explore investing that same $15 million into helping 35,000 Boston residents most in need of relief, such as our seniors on fixed income and working families. This investment could ensure that at least 20% to 30% of Boston households with an assessed home value of 1.5 million or lower would be financially protected with a property tax increase greater than 3.5%. In my opinion, now is not the time for us to raise property taxes in Boston. Raising taxes on economically challenging landscape will hurt Boston for many years, and this would impact jobs and our economic competitiveness, services, and many livelihoods. It is time that we look to cut city spending and review our hiring practices. During economically challenging times, it is critical that we practice fiscal discipline in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Council Flynn. Moving me on this hearing order. Back on August 7th, I filed-
Apologies, Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Back on August 7th, I filed a hearing order that was for the Boston City Council to address the next steps after the property tax reclassification did not move through the State House. And I know myself and the Chair of Ways and Means, Council Worell, have been talking about joining that conversation coming up in a few weeks when he holds a hearing to talk about the rate when it's set, but I look forward to this hearing and this conversation as one option that we may be able to take advantage of and to help ease the possible financial impact coming to our residents and to our commercial owners. So it's important that we talk about what the administration's Plan B is. We still haven't heard, but I think it's smart that we on the council, we're a smart group that can get things done, that we also bring forward our own ideas if this doesn't end up passing and ends up coming back to us and having to answer to our business owners, but of course, our residents who are afraid of their upcoming increases to their property taxes. So looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, this docket, docket number 1445, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1446?
Document number 1446, Councilor Murphy offered the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding school bus data.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am asking that the data that BPS has been sharing about school bus time is only including arrival times at school, so I'm requesting for the school buses that are driving our students home, I would like the time each school bus is scheduled to arrive at the school in the afternoon to drive the students home, the time it does arrive, and the time each of our buses is dropping off our last student at home. Please include data from the first 15 school days, we are on day 15 now, and include every bus route across the city. I'm requesting that the Boston Public Schools and the appropriate and/or relevant departments, parties, or parties through the mayor provide any and all information that is available regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy, seeking expansion of the rules and passes docket number 1446. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 1446 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1447?
Document number 1447, Councilor Murphy offered the following. Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding second request for White Stadium documents.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So two weeks ago, I filed this. The administration has 10 days to respond. I have not heard anything from the administration yet, so I'm filing a second request, having not received documents or information from the administration responsive to the original filing, and having received no communication regarding the delay, asking for the same 17F to be refiled, that under the provisions of the 17F, Chapter 452 of the Acts of 1948 as amended, that the documents identified in the Boston Planning Department's memo related to approval of the project at White Stadium, including the lease between BPS, Boston Unity Soccer Club, LLC, and any other interested or involved party, the stadium usage agreement, and the corporation agreement, and the transportation action plan agreement. So I'm hoping that this second request gets us the information that we on the council have a right to request through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy, seeking expansion of the rules and passes docket number 1447. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 1447 has passed.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket 1448?
Document number 1448, Council Louie Jen offered the following. Resolution recognizing September 2024 as Kinship Awareness Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jen. Council, you have the floor. I better put this on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. September is Kinship Awareness Month, and I would like to add Counselor Santana as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing or hearing no objection, Counselor Santana is duly added.
Thank you, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Mahiha as a third original co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection, Council Mahiha is added as a third co-sponsor.
Thank you. In recognition of Kinship Awareness Month, I want to take this opportunity to recognize the role that kinship caregivers play in our community. These are people, often grandparents, relatives, or close family friends, who step in when families face difficult decisions and situations. They provide children with love, support, and stability they need during tough times. By keeping family connections strong, kinship caregivers help children feel safe and cared for. I'd like to get a bit personal here and express my deep gratitude for a kinship caregiver that we have in my office, Cindy, who's a mother-to-be but already serving as a kinship caregiver to her siblings. She's a shining example of what it means to care for family in the face of overwhelming challenges, and has been a steady source of love and stability for her family. So thank you, Cindy, for your dedication and all the work that you do in my office and in the city of Boston, and personally for your family, so, messy on you. Kinship caregivers like Cindy take on important responsibility, often with little support or recognition, but their impact is profound. By opening their homes and hearts to children in need, they create nurturing environments where kids can heal, grow, and thrive. This month, let's come together as a community to show our support for all kinship caregivers, recognizing the essential role they play in shaping the future of our families and communities. To every kinship caregiver out there, thank you for your unwavering commitment and love. Your hard work makes a world of difference, and we are all better because of it. And we have today in chambers some champions of our young people who are with caregivers, and I just want to make sure that we shout them out. We have with us Faith Latwes. Faith, if you could just please stand so that we could recognize you, representing the over 2,000 children and families that Massachusetts Mentor serves, a community-based service provider that was founded in Boston in 1984. We have Lavanda Epps, a longstanding provider and caretaker who supports the work at Mass Mentor, and I don't see him here yet, but there's also Bill Johnson, a clinician with over 30 years of experience in serving vulnerable children and youth, and also a kinship adoptive parent. We obviously need more foster parents to see you, Council Fernandez Anderson, we need more people taking care of our young kids, but it's also so important that where we can, that we keep that family connection with either aunts or with grandparents or with family friends, so that that child is connected to kin. So want to just recognize all of the people who are, work so hard on behalf of our young people to make sure that they have a place, not only that is home, but something that reminds them of that bond, of that parenting bond. So just want to say thank you to both of you for being here and for the work that you do on behalf of our city and our Commonwealth, and thank you to my colleagues. I am looking to suspend and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Council President Louie Jen, for including me in this. Kinship care is a vital form of caregiving where grandparents, relatives, and close family friends step in to provide love, stability, and guidance for children in times of crisis. These caregivers ensure that children stay connected to their families and communities, offering them the continuity and support they need to thrive. Research shows that children in kinship care experience better behavioral health outcomes and are less affected by trauma. By designating September as Kinship Awareness Month, we recognize the dedication of these caregivers and the resilience of the children they care for. I encourage all Boston residents to join us in raising awareness and showing appreciation for the kinship caregivers who provide such an invaluable service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Uh-
Oh, your light wasn't on. Beg your pardon. Council Mahiha, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sometimes forget that I'm supposed to turn on my light, even if I'm so-
Beg your pardon.
Even if I'm a sponsor, sorry about that. So I just want to thank Council Louie Jen for filing this and adding me as an original co-sponsor, so happy to join Counsel Santana on this. I know that Counsel Anderson is far more versed and ready to speak on this because she has personal lived experience in this sort of role, so I won't belabor the point here. I just wanted to stand here today in support of recognizing September 2024 as Kinship Awareness Month, because this hits home for so many families here in the city of Boston. Kinship care is about grandparents, relatives, and close families who usually step up when life takes these unexpected turns, and they're the ones who are providing love, stability, and support when it's needed most. You know, I'm going to leave this here for, just to speak from my heart, because the reason why when I saw the resolution and it really spoke to me is because I know growing up here in the city of Boston, oftentimes it was our neighbors that really stood up and took care of the children who were running around these streets when our parents weren't able to do so. I mean, you want to talk about stabilizing a home, that is what it looked like back in the day there was a village, and oftentimes, a lot of my neighbors assumed far more responsibilities than they needed to, and I think that these folks are, may not have a formal kinship role as a caregiver, and they may not be part of the system, but these folks were definitely standing in the void for so many families, and those are the folks that I really want to uplift as these unsung heroes who every day show up, even oftentimes coming out of their own pockets to care for little ones, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that by honoring this month, the dedication is just also about the resilience and the love, and it's also about recognizing the strength of the children who are navigating tough situations but are held steady by the care of their family and loved ones. And so by declaring September as Kinship Awareness Month, we're committing to showing up for these families and making sure that they get the resources that they need to succeed. So thank you, Council President Louie Jen, for bringing this to the council and for allowing me to join you.
Thank you, Council Mahiha. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Council Louie Jen, for filing this. I think I rise to specifically shout out Mass Mentors, DCF, as well as Dare, Homeful Little Wonders, Bridge Over Trouble Waters, there's so many other agencies that does this work, but I know firsthand I had some interaction with Mass Mentors in the capacity of doing FIFA service, home-based therapeutic services, and understand that you guys are extremely- services, and understand that you guys are extremely proficient, and I deeply respect you. Being a previous foster parent myself for over a decade, I have fully, well, not fully, but tried to assess the systems and the different loopholes, or rather, lack of resources that DCF and outside third-party agencies such as yourself works with. My first foster parent experience, I was a kinship foster parent, and it was to a family member, of course, that I deeply love and saw as a son, and it's pretty difficult. You first have to convince a family member if they're not open or ready, because it just happens, and I know that you guys do a tremendous job at making sure it's a fine kinship first before placing with a stranger. But then, secondly, without the resources that DCF social workers struggle to connect families with, then you have to also ready the biological parent, who is also not always in agreement with the child going to the kinship foster parent. So it's such an arduous experience to just connect at first, and to get the buy-in, because then the biological parent is embarrassed naturally, that now my cousin, or my niece, or my aunt, or whomever, is taking care of my child, and what does that mean for me? Does that mean that I'm an inadequate parent? So, a lot of hard work goes into that, and I am deeply grateful for the work that you do. We certainly, to quote my colleague, "We certainly need more foster parents." So I encourage everyone, if your schedule allows, to become a foster parent, or maybe a respite foster parent at some point, just to support these efforts. The other thing is that we just have to shout out Five Oh Nine for their efforts in trying to unionize foster parents, whether kinship or not, which is extremely important. So foster parents get sort of a stipend, and it's just simply, it's not to pay you to take care of it, it's sort of supplemental to your expenses, and it doesn't reach near our capacity. So, shout out to Five Oh Nine, the union, who is trying to unionize foster parents, as well as Roxbury Community College, who I am currently working with. Get this, I believe that Roxbury Community College wants to do housing on their lot. I believe that children aging out of DCF should have a dormitory at RCC, paid by the state, which they do, they pay rent to aging out students, while they get their associate's degree for free. So, it's an amazing idea, if I do say so myself, and God willing, I'll be working with RCC, the president of RCC, and Chief Dillon, to be working on this. It's the first ever nationwide, so not to take too much away from the whole kinship thing, but it's, there's a huge, broad topic here. It's not very attractive, so people don't talk about it enough, but you guys are definitely overworked and underpaid, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Pepin, Counselor Weber, and please add my name. Council President Louie Jean seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1448. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket 1448 has been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. The chair recognizes, Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 1449?
Docket number 1449, Counselor Coletta Zapata, offer the following. Resolution recognizing October as Italian-American Heritage Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to add you as a second cosponsor.
Thank you. I'm so added. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. There are more than twenty-six million Americans of Italian descent, making this community one of the largest ethnic groups in our country. Here in Massachusetts, October as Italian-American Heritage Month was passed in the state legislature, and then signed into law by Governor Paul Salucci in nineteen ninety-eight. Thousands of Italian immigrants from Italy have made their home here in Boston since the eighteen sixties, especially in the North End, East Boston, Brighton, Hyde Park, and South Boston. Many people of Italian descent have served the city of Boston selflessly in public office, including the late Thomas M. Menino, the longest-serving mayor in the history of Boston, and the grandson of Italian immigrants. Thinking about my district specifically, East Boston and the North End have always been welcoming and inclusive communities for Italian immigrants and all immigrants. Our shipyards welcome thousands of people from Italy, including my own great-grandparents, who migrated here in nineteen oh nine in search of the American dream. They are the reasons why my roots run deep in East Boston, and I'm grateful to have been raised in Italian traditions and customs passed down through the decades. As a proud fourth-generation Italian-American, I am proud to say we are more than just stereotypes portrayed on TVs, on TV and in movies. We are proud to have a long legacy of civic involvement and charitable giving. We place significant importance in viewing our neighbors as family, and we emphasize that everybody has a seat at the table for Sunday dinner, and our ancestors band together even in the toughest of times. In the turn of the twentieth century, many were shunned, vilified, and seen as other. Many were denied citizenship after literacy tests were applied with the intent to disenfranchise anyone who did not have a formal English education. Thinking back over the last one hundred years, it's so important to honor our history and our journey, to fully understand the progress that has been made, and more importantly, assist those just starting their journey here in this own country, here in this country. So today, we are affirming what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has already done in nineteen ninety-eight, and we seek to raise the Italian flag here in the city of Boston on October second at eleven AM. Everybody is welcome to attend, and we will have some delicious treats from the North End for everybody. I'm so proud, again, to be an Italian-American, and I look forward to celebrating our unique and beautiful contributions to this society. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata, for always honoring your Italian heritage. Just want to second a lot of what you said about the richness of our Italian community, especially in the North End, East Boston, Hyde Park, everywhere, and just also the acknowledgement that the Italians had their own road here when facing discrimination and trying to make Boston their home. So just want to recognize all of our Italian-American community here in the city of Boston, how much they contribute, both in food and in politics and in so many other arenas, and so I look forward to next Wednesday. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Coletta for bringing this forward, this important resolution. I'm also proud to represent a large Italian-Italian-American community in South Boston, in downtown Boston as well, and just want to recognize them and their hard work, especially in including our city workers that do a tremendous job for us in almost every department, that they provide exceptional leadership to the residents of the city, whether it's on the fire department, the police department, the public works, our schoolteachers, but proud to represent a large Italian-Italian-American community. Want to say thank you to them for their service and sacrifice, as well in support of our nation and the armed forces, always giving back, making the city better, making our country better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Coletta for once again bringing this resolution recognizing Italian-American Heritage Month. She did mention Brighton, yes, we have a large Italian community in all of St. Brighton, many of them hail from San Donato, and you have to be careful what you say around Brighton, because they're all related to each other. So I really want to celebrate the incredible contributions of our Italian-American neighbors in my neighborhood. Big shout-out to Fred Salvucci, who was the Secretary of Transportation at the state and was one of the architects of the Big Dig. If you ever listen to the podcast on the Big Dig, he's prominently referenced in that as a person who wanted to make sure that the communities were connected and that our city was reconnected by taking down the elevated highway right here in this neighborhood of this downtown. So, yes, there's so many incredible contributions by Italian-Americans, and thank you, and look forward to celebrating next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as someone who's married to an Italian-American, I just wanted to thank my wife for allowing me to participate, you know, in her culture. It's definitely enriched my life and my kids' lives, and just want to thank her. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please, Counselors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Pepin, Santana, and Weber. Counselors Coletta Zapata and Counselor President Louie Jean, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1449. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, docket number 1449 has been adopted. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 1450?
Docket number 1450, Counselors Weber and Santana, offer the following. Resolution in support of COLA base increase for city of Boston retirees.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Flynn as a third sponsor.
Counselor Weber seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Flynn as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Flynn is so added. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to recognize that we've been joined today by, you know, more than a dozen retirees, Boston workers who are retired. Last week, the Boston Retirement Board voted against a cost-of-living base increase from fifteen thousand dollars to eighteen thousand dollars that Boston retirees have been asking for now for over two years. My office and several members of this council submitted testimony in support of a three percent annual COLA, sorry, in support of an increase of the COLA base to eighteen thousand dollars, and sent letters in support to the retirement board in May, and members of our staffs appeared at two consecutive meetings of the retirement board, and I believe Counselor Flynn was the, attended at least the last one in person, I'll let him clarify. Since two thousand and ten, retirement boards in Massachusetts have been allowed to increase the COLA base. Here in Boston, we've only done that now three times for an added ninety dollars per retiree per year. Municipal retirees in the Boston retirement system paid into the system for years and dedicated their whole lives of service to our city, and are now living on a fixed income. We owe it to our, you know, to the people who made our city work, to advocate for them so they can receive the benefits they deserve and that they're entitled to. In two thousand and twenty-two, the mayor and this council approved an increase in the COLA percentage from three to five percent for just fiscal year twenty-three. Regardless of last week's vote, we should stand with our retirees and urge the city to take action by increasing the COLA base, which would help retirees stay in Boston and age with dignity. I ask that we suspend the rules and adopt this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Weber. Today, I rise in strong support of the resolution Counselor Weber and I, Counselor Weber, Flynn, and I are introducing, advocating for a cost-of-living adjustment based increase for our city of Boston retirees. These retirees have dedicated years of their lives to serving Boston, and our schools, public safety, libraries, transportation, and countless other vital services. They have contributed their hard-earned money to the retirement system with the hope of living comfortably after their years of service. The rising cost of living in Boston has made it increasingly difficult for retirees to keep pace with expenses, particularly in transportation, food, and housing. While we have seen small COLA adjustments over the years, as Counselor Weber said earlier, the last base increase was in two thousand and twenty-one, and since then, our retirees have been asking for an increase from fifteen thousand dollars to eighteen thousand dollars. That's three years of advocating without the change they deserve. On Tuesday, the Boston Retirement Board chose not to vote in favor of this increase, but our fight does not end there. These retirees are on fixed incomes, and we owe it to them to ensure they can continue living in the city they helped build and age with dignity. I urge the city to act swiftly and increase the COLA base to at least eighteen thousand dollars. It is time we honor our commitment to those individuals and give them the financial stability that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Weber and Counselor Santana for including me. I also stand today to offer my support for city of Boston retirees for many reasons. I often think that they're unsung heroes in our city. They don't get paid a lot of money. The retirement for most city retirees is low. I was at a store recently on F Street in South Boston, and I saw a city retiree, an elderly woman, who was, who picked up a can of Campbell's soup, and I said to her, "What are you looking at the soup? What are you looking at the price for?" And she said, "Oh, I don't know if I have enough money to afford the can of soup." And for this woman, that was a significant issue, whether or not she was going to have lunch in the afternoon. But this woman served the city for thirty years, and while a lot of us had holidays with our families, this woman was out cleaning the streets. I think she was a custodian, and she was cleaning the streets and helping people. And that's like many of our city retirees. They're not in it for the money, they're not in it for the prestige, but they want a little bit of respect, and they want a little bit of respect in retirement, dignity in retirement, and it's not a lot to ask for. They've been there for the residents of Boston during difficult times in this city, and now they're asking for a little bit of support from us, from this body, so that they can pay their bills, so that they can keep the heat on, so that they can buy a can of soup, or buy a cup of coffee. But let's, let's during these difficult economic times, ensure that our city retirees are respected, because they've earned it. We're not giving them anything. They've earned the respect from us, and I just wanted to stand here and again, say thank you to my council colleagues for adding me. And I always attend the hearing in person. I attended the last two in person, but over the last seven years, I also attend in person, because I want to stand there with our city retirees in person, acknowledge their contributions to the city, to thank them, and to stand with them. They're not asking for a lot. It's the least we can do as a body to stand with our city retirees and say thank you, and maybe we can offer you a little bit more than what you have been offered by the administration. Give them an opportunity to retire in dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Weber, Santana, and Flynn for bringing this forward. I'm in full support of this resolution. First, also, thank you to our retirees, city of Boston. All that has been said is true, and I think this resolution, a unanimous resolution, will show our support, but I know my office has been at all of these meetings, and I think all of us, when these Boston retirement hearings happen, we already have written letters, and we've already said as a body, I think each office has already told the administration that we all support our retirees, and we all wanted this to pass. So yes, I think this resolution will show, even though I think our letters and our presence at the meeting already showed that we supported it, but I do think we should maybe also, separate from this, have a hearing and find out why. Why are they not passing it? I have a lot of questions. I know that there were not enough, there were people who voted no, and I think it's important for us as a body to know, why are you saying no to a few dollars to our retirees? That little, it's not a huge amount. It would make a difference. I would argue they deserve more, but I think we as a body should also look into holding a hearing with the retirement board, whoever else could give us answers on why they keep continuously disrespecting our retirees. But I will be voting in favor, so I don't want to in any way block a vote today on the resolution, but if some of us want to work together on putting out a hearing order so that we could bring in those parties that could give us answers to why we're not supporting our retirees, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd just like to thank my colleagues for stepping up and speaking up, right? I think that's really important. That's actually what our job is, right, is to create space and utilize our platform to amplify the voices of the people, and we do that day in and day out, right? And so... And so I think there is something to be said, as my previous colleague mentioned, that we have already written letters, we have been on the record even during the budget season. We are always in support, but there is definitely a disconnect, and I'm not sure what happens. It's like trying to crack the Da Vinci Code, because we're all in agreement, and then something happens, and everything falls apart. So I just want you all to know that it is, it's no, it's not lost on me that what you're asking for is, I think it's like less than $3,000 extra dollars, $18,000. Like, that might not, it might not sound like a lot to some folks in terms of the percentage, but it does mean a lot to the folks that we're advocating on behalf of, because it makes a difference between whether or not you are going to buy that cup of, you know, that cup of coffee, or the Campbell's soup, or if you're going to pay your rent. I think it's unjust that our workers, who have to be Boston employees, City of Boston residents, can't afford to even live in the City of Boston, and now we're making it harder for those who have dedicated their lives to Boston to actually stay in Boston. There's something to be said here about the impact and how we're thanking those who have devoted their careers to the City of Boston. So I want to just rise in support of this resolution, and I also do think that there is an opportunity for us to recognize that a lot of our city employees who have aged, who are aging out of the workforce, right, are now literally, either they, they're earning with their fixed income a little bit too much, so they don't qualify for even some subsidies, right? So there's also an issue there in terms of like, how do we expect people to work with what they have, when oftentimes, if they're making a little bit too extra, they don't qualify for certain benefits? So I think that there is, the whole system needs to be revised, but that's for a whole different day and a different conversation. But I do think that in the spirit of accountability and transparency, I do believe that the city does have an opportunity to help us understand why this was not passed, especially with all the advocacy that my colleagues did here on the council. So either you're hearing us and don't want to hear what we have to say, or you're hearing what you want to hear, but at the end of the day, our voices were loud, and we were on board, and I'm sorry to hear that here we are having to file a resolution, which for those folks, you know, a resolution really doesn't change much, it's just a symbol of our advocacy on your behalf. But that symbol does mean something. So I think that now we have to do something. I don't know what it is, Councillor Weber. The Chair of Economic Empowerment, I'm gonna look to you to do something about this, but, and you're a lawyer too, so I, fix it right now and make it happen for them.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Fernandez. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Our office, and thank you to the makers. Our office has been working with the entire cohort team in terms of raise, getting a raise, a base wage raise to the COLA, and I don't want to belabor the points that my colleagues have already made. Yes to retiring with integrity, yes to city is just way too expensive to live in, and it's pretty straightforward. They deserve it. We should treat people with dignity, and people should feel comfortable that they've taken care of the city and the city got their back. So I rise in support, and again, thank you to the makers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Durkin. Councillor Durkin, you have the floor.
I rise today in strong support of this resolution proposed by my colleagues, Councillor Weber, Santana, and Flynn, to increase the cost of living adjustment for municipal retirees. I think you've heard from my colleagues why this is important, but I'm excited to support this resolution today, and excited to stand with those who have been educators, sanitation workers, librarians, public safety professionals, and countless others who have dedicated their lives to the City of Boston. Again, thank you to my colleagues. I wasn't able to join these meetings, but I did send a letter of support, and I stand behind that support today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I also rise to support this resolution. I think when we passed the increase in the COLA in 2021, it was our understanding that we would continue incrementally to increase the COLA by $1,000 each year until we reached $18,000. So it's really disappointing to see that here we are, three years later, and this, this issue hasn't moved forward, and we haven't increased the COLA. It's really, as everyone has spoken, you know, these were, these retirees have dedicated their life to working in the City of Boston. There've been incredible history of public servant, service to our communities and our city, and they deserve to live in dignity, with dignity and respect as they, as they reach their senior years. So I, please add my name, and I do hope that we can move this thing forward, even if we incrementally increase the COLA by $1,000 per year, as, as was the intention, I think, back in 2021. We should just keep moving on this and come, achieve parity with other municipalities in Massachusetts, because other, other cities are doing this, and we should not be lagging behind, given the cost of living in the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Braden, the Chair recognizes Councillor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to rise here to say that we, we wrote a letter of support, and I attended several of these hearings myself throughout the year. We will continue to advocate for these retirees as this goes forward until it's done, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I hope it's, it's been shown the advocacy and support that you have here on the council, from all of us, including my office, attending in person or sending letters. We just know that you should not be so tight financially, and that we have a role that we can play, and that we will continue to play. So I just want to thank the makers for offering this resolution. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mihia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, please add the, oh, not Santana, he's an original co-sponsor, Pepe, and the, and me. Awesome. Okay. Councillors Weber, Santana, and Flynn, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1450. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1450. Councillor Braden.
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councillor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councillor Durkin.
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councillor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mihia.
Yes.
Councillor Mihia, yes. Councillor Murphy.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. Councillor Pepe.
Yes.
Councillor Pepe, yes. Councillor Santana.
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. Councillor Weirall. Docket number 1450 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. And I'd welcome, once this meeting is over, which will hopefully be somewhat soon, we can take a photo with you and also with the folks from Mass Mentor. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1451?
Docket number 1451, Councillor Mihia offer the following. Resolution recognizing September 26, 2024 as Boston Women's Fund Day in honor of its 40th anniversary.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Mihia. Councillor Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I, every time I read a citation, because your name is on it, I always say, and it is signed by a black woman who's our president. And so today, I want to suspend, actually add you as a co-sponsor to the Boston Women's Fund.
I'm so added.
No objection?
Yeah.
No objection?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so thank you for your leadership. So I, we've already acknowledged them, and I don't want to, oh, because we're trying to end early. So I just want to just read into the record that this particular day, September 26, 2024, is in honor of the 40th anniversary of the Boston Women's Fund. It is an organization that has been dedicated to creating opportunities for women and gender expression, and folks who are deeply committed to the grassroots movement. And tomorrow, September 26, is their annual fundraiser, and we want to celebrate and honor Boston Women's Fund Day here in the City of Boston for their work in reaching such an amazing milestone. When they started in the 80s, yes, in the 80s, I was a teen already, good lord, Alex. Strike that from the record, Ellen. But, you know, it's really funny just to kind of see this full circle moment here in the City of Boston, as someone who grew up at a time where there was so much angst in the City of Boston, and to have a fund even then that was dedicated to racial healing and social justice, really speaks volumes to why they were created, and the impact that they have made over the years. So really happy to be supporting and honoring this particular organization for their work, and I look forward to celebrating them tomorrow and always. And I want to give a shout out again to their Executive Director, Natania Craig, for her leadership in this space, and congratulations to the 40 women who are being honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mihia. Chambers look really beautiful today with the honorees for tomorrow's event, which I'm looking forward to. I want to continue to uplift the leadership of Natania and Alexandra, and everyone who makes Boston Women's Fund what it is, and their ideas around radical philanthropy, and making sure that folks who are getting funded are the folks who are experiencing the harms and are our thought leader. So just want to, again, shout out to Boston Women's Fund, celebrating their 40th anniversary, and I look forward to tomorrow with all of the honorees. Councillor Mihia and Councillor President Louie Jean, suspended, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Councillor Mihia and Louie Jean, suspended the rules and passage of docket number 1451. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1452?
Docket number 1452, Councillor Mihia offer the following. Resolution recognizing September 29, 2024 as Runway for Mom Day in celebration of its 10th anniversary.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Mihia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to add Councillor Anderson as an original co-sponsor.
Councillor Fernand Anderson is so added. You, Councillor Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Again, we have already did the present, did the presentation earlier today. Really also super excited that on September 29, I will be walking the runway alongside my mom in a segment called Legacy. It's really about the family, and I often talk about the fact that, you know, I would not be here today if it wouldn't have been for my mom's sacrifices and the struggles that she had to go through just to get to this country. And so I'm really honored that I'm going to be able to walk with my mom and create space for her to shine. So I'm really excited to honor her, even though we're just walking the runway, but to give my mom a little bit of opportunity to put away the mop and this, and cleaning and cooking and working, and give her an opportunity to be celebrated and to shine. And so I just want to thank Runways for Mom for allowing me to participate, and congratulations on your 10th anniversary, creating space for moms to show up and show out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mihia. That's beautiful. I'm glad that you're able to do that with your mother. The Chair recognizes Councillor Fernand Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councillor Mihia, for adding me. I had no idea this thing existed, but after reading your resolution, understanding what it is, and obviously having experience in doing so, or putting together fashion shows myself, and Councillor Mihia, I actually remember when you were first running, you attended one of my shows, and that's how we officially met for the very first time. So it does, there's a lot of work that goes behind this. It's not just, you know, thematic shows that represents women or women of all influences. I used to do shows, particularly for transgender women to express themselves. So I do really appreciate this and look forward to hopefully seeing how I can collaborate with them. I can't wait to see you strut down the runway with your mom. And again, congratulations to your mom and everybody else on the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fernand Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Councillors Mihia and Fernand Anderson, suspended the rules and passage of docket number 1452. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1453?
Docket number 1453, Councillor Flynn offer the following. Resolution supporting the renaming of the soccer field within Saunders Stadium in honor of Billy Baker.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Flynn. Councillor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Billy Baker, born and raised in South Boston, was widely known for his vision and dedication to bringing soccer to the youth of South Boston and other neighborhoods. In 1985, he established the South Boston Youth Soccer League with the mission of enable, enabling the ongoing development of youth soccer players in an inclusive, safe, affordable, and fun environment. Billy was dedicated to the growth and success of South Boston youth soccer. As president of the league for over 35 years, he worked with other suburban community sports leagues. He attended countless meetings with the Parks Department, completed numerous permit applications. He prepared for games every weekend. He recruited coaches, and referees, volunteers from all over the town. He was also deeply committed to making the soccer league affordable for every child. He would solicit funds from the community, businesses, merchants, elected officials to purchase jerseys, trophies, and year-end gifts. He later established a sports collaborative with other fellow leagues in order to open and operate a snack bar and restroom at Saunders Stadium. Through Billy's tireless dedication to his duties as league president, and at the height of the league, South Boston youth soccer registered up to 1,300 players per sea, per season, ranging from 3 to 18, including my two children played in the, played in the South Boston youth soccer program as well. Beginning each season, an opening day parade of athletes consisted of players led by an honor guard proudly marched around the track and field at Saunders Stadium with teammates and signs representing their team in mascots. Although these teams included many dignitaries, including mayors, our senators, elected officials, professional athletes throughout the years, Billy's focus was always about the players from the youth soccer program. Well after his own children had grown up, Billy Baker remained the one constant presence in the South Boston Youth Soccer League. Throughout his life, he consistently devoted his time and efforts at a moment's notice to ensure that children from the neighborhoods had the opportunity to participate. The success of the league today is a testament to his unwavering dedication to bringing soccer to the youth of South Boston. With little fanfare, Billy Baker selfishly devoted much of his life to ensuring that all children of South Boston had the opportunity to participate in this wonderful sport. His dedication and commitment to the people of South Boston allowed generations of neighbors to be able to experience the joy of competing in youth sports, to be part of a team, to feel welcomed, connected to the neighborhood and community. Mocley Park, as you well know, is across the street from Mary Ellen McCormick and Lynch Homes, two of the largest developments in the city, and probably the most, one of the most diverse developments in the city as well. Billy welcomed everybody, bringing everybody into the South Boston youth soccer program. In short, Billy's vision also helped our youth develop and learn how to become good citizens and neighbors. When the people of South Boston think of youth soccer, they think of Billy Baker. There is no one more deserving of having the soccer field within Saunders Stadium at Mocley Park named in his honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mihia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Councillor Flynn, suspended the rules and passage of docket number 1453. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1453. Councillor Braden.
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councillor Coletta Zapata, yes. Councillor Durkin.
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councillor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mihia.
Yes.
Councillor Mihia, yes. Councillor Murphy.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. Councillor Pepe.
Yes.
Councillor Pepe, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are now on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 1178 on page 17 of the green sheets. That's for the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Again, that's docket number 1178 on page 17.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read, once you find it, will you please read docket number 1178 into the record?
From the green sheets from the Committee of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1178. Message not authorizing the city of Boston to accept a donation of a 2013 Ford F-150 truck. The purpose of this donation is to support the Boston Police Department in their investigation of individuals and entities suspected of insurance fraud and any other departmental needs.
Thank you. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket number 1178 authorizes the city of Boston to accept the donation of a 2013 Ford F-150 from Hanover Insurance provided through the Massachusetts Insurance Fraud Bureau. This vehicle will be used by the Boston Police Department Auto Theft Unit in investigations related to insurance fraud, organized crime, and illegal off-highway vehicle operations. Though the vehicle has high mileage and rare damage, it remains valuable for surveillance purposes, helping to reduce fraudulent claims and potentially lowering insurance premiums for Boston residents. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and a formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 1178 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1178 is properly before the body. If anybody would like to speak on the matter. If not, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks passage of docket number 1178. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counselor Santana has another green sheet pulled. You may.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 1387 for the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Docket 1387 is on page 18 of the green sheets.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Once you have that located, if you could please read that docket into the record.
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1387. Message not authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $106,000 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 23 Fire Prevention and Safety Grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund critically needed resources to strengthen community fire prevention programs and enable scientific research on innovations that improve firefighter safety, health, and well-being.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on all the city of Boston grants administered by the Boston Fire Department on June 11, 2024. As Chair, I was joined by my colleagues, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Weber, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The committee also received a letter of absent from Counselor Pepe. The committee heard testimony from three Boston Fire Department staff members: Kevin Coyne, Deputy Commissioner, Administration and Finance; Julie Byrne Devon, Procurement and Grants Management; and Shawna Lynch, who was a grants manager. The BFD panelists spoke on the specifics of each grant, as well as discussing the department's overall grants programs, changes from past years, and the grants team's works to pursue additional competitive grants to increase funding for Boston Fire Department services. In addition to discussing this particular grant during the hearing, the committee also has received a detailed written information on this specific grant, which I have reviewed as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. This grant of $106,000 will fund two program activities for the Boston Fire Department, one being the code enforcement awareness activity, and the second being fire arson investigation and arson investigation training activities. The grant funds 95% of the program with a 5% in-kind cost share from city resources. The intention of this program is to threaten fire prevention efforts through advanced training and ensure compliance with updated fire codes and regulations. Additionally, it will improve fire investigation capabilities, ensuring that investigators are equipped with the latest techniques and resources to solve cases more effectively and reduce risk to both firefighters and the public. The Hot Work Safety Certificate Program and the Fire Inspector and Engineer Training Program are both crucial components of the broader effort to reduce fire risk across Boston, particularly in complex environments like high rises. By addressing identified training gaps, we aim to prevent fire incidents through better enforcement of safety regulations and enhance the investigative skills of the department in responding to fire-related incidents, particularly arson cases. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and a formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 1387 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. Docket number 1387 is properly before the body. If anyone would like to speak on this matter. Counselor Santana seeks passage of docket number 1387. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counselor Santana, we're all good. Counselor Santana, okay. Thank you. Counselor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 1285 from page 3 of the green sheets. That is under the City Services and Technology Innovation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Once you have that identified, please read that matter into the record. Thank you.
What's the docket? Docket number 1285. From the Committee of City Services and Innovation Technology, docket number 1285. Message not authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $20,020 in the form of a grant for the El Centro Fellowship Grant awarded by the Catholic Charities Archdiocese of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the fellowship program for El Centro IT Training Program graduates.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counselor Pepe, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As already stated, this is a message order authorizing the city of Boston to expand the amount of $20,020 in the form of a grant. This is for El Centro, where they serve many immigrants, possess valuable education and professional experience from their home countries. Yet, lack of U.S. work experience often prevents them from entering professional roles in the United States, leading to underemployment and untapped potential. Simultaneously, the technology sector is in dire need of diverse talent to address racial disparities and achievement gaps. El Centro's fellowship program aims to connect highly qualified yet underemployed immigrant professionals with employers-seeking talent. Approximately 40% of El Centro students have college degrees from abroad, and many are motivated to advance their careers, particularly in IT and cybersecurity, fields where they are currently underrepresented. The fellowship offers participants essential hands-on experience, enhancing their competitiveness in the labor market while directly addressing issues of underemployment and economic disparity among immigrants of color, ultimately enriching the city's IT workforce. The purpose of this fellowship program is to prepare and place highly skilled immigrants into paid fellowships in the field of cybersecurity. Participants will be provided with U.S. work experience and the opportunity to grow their resumes. The city of Boston's Department of Innovation and Technology will host participants. Once the fellowship ends, participants will have earned much-needed work experience for successful further career pursuits in IT security and networks. High demand fuels for Boston's public and private sectors. At this moment, I ask my colleagues in support of this passage.
Counselor Pepe, the Chair of the City Services and Innovation Technology seeks passage of docket number 1285. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Is it appropriate to ask to reconsider 1433, which was earlier, that was moved to Planning, Development, and Transportation? We just had a hearing on a very similar docket, so I wanted to move to suspend and pass.
Right. That's the EV, that's the EV, that's the electric vehicle one, right. Okay, is there a second on the motion to reconsider? That was seconded. You're seeking suspension and passage of a docket. Okay, would you like, you can speak on the matter.
Thank you so much. At our recent hearing, we heard all about the Mass EV IP grant, and we heard about these grants administered by the Transportation Department, and we did speak about the use of these fast-charging electric vehicle stations at municipal lots. With great interest, a lot of my colleagues asked questions, so I'd like to move to suspend and pass this docket, given that it's on a similar vein as the hearing we just had.
Thank you. Now, are these just, is this on this docket? Okay. I think I start Counselor Murphy first. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Counselor Durkin, if I could ask her a question, if that's right.
You may ask the question.
Sure. Do you know which municipal parking lots these four will be installed at? Did they tell us the locations of the four parking lots?
Through the chair, Counselor Durkin, if you'd like to answer that question, you may.
Thank you. We have requested the locations of all electric chargers, and we are still waiting on that information. So, but this is one of many grants that will come before our committee for this purpose.
Thank you. Does that answer the question, Counselor Murphy? Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a similar question of the four sites. I just wanted to know if there was there one in District 2. I just wanted to know the location.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. If you have the answer, you may answer that through the chair.
I don't have the answer to that question, but I am seeking the answers to where all these will be located, and I'm happy to share those with my colleagues when it's available.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn, you have another question or statement?
Yeah, I would rather have a hearing on it, Madam Chair, so I know where it's going in my district, instead of me voting on it now and finding out later. I'd rather find out about it in the committee hearing.
Okay, are you objecting to suspension and passage?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, okay, yeah. All right, so we will not be voting on this matter. It will remain in committee in the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee. I just want to say thank you, Counselor Durkin, because I was at that hearing where I asked specific questions about where the chargers will be located, and I know that he's getting us that information, but when I saw this too, it reminded me of the hearing that we had last week. So thank you for flagging this matter. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay, we are now on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are, that there is one late file matter. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the late file matter into the record? Oh, all in favor of adding the late file matter into the agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, would you please read it into the agenda?
Absence letter. Dear Council President Louie Jean and Council colleagues, I regret to inform you that I'll be unable to attend today's city council meeting due to being sick. My staff will be in attendance, and I will review the tape of the meeting when it becomes available. Thank you, Counselor Worrell.
Thank you. The chair moves to pass this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. We're going to start off with birthdays, and our very own, Counselor Fitzgerald is celebrating his birthday. So if someone will hit that Happy Birthday tune.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Dear Fitz. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Yes. He told me not to make a big deal out of it, so I didn't make a big deal out of it. So. Upcoming events, the South Boston Street Festival is rescheduled to the Saturday. There's also the Taste of Alston on Saturday, the Honin 5K Road Race on Sunday, the Alston-Brighton Parade on Sunday, the Nigerian Flag Racing next Tuesday, and the Italian Flag Racing next Wednesday. The chair recognizes Counselor Pepe, and I also just want to, again, shout out to Candace, who's made done a great job making a calendar of events for us as well. So thank you, Candace, for doing that. Counselor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to invite all of you to my district this weekend, especially at large, Counselors. High Park Library is celebrating its 125th anniversary on Saturday. I believe it's almost the second oldest library in the city of Boston after the one in Copley. And then I would love to invite you to Rosendale Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the Greek Food Festival at Saint Natalio's Church. So I know that the clerk and I will see you there. And I also want to wish my wife a happy birthday. Her birthday is on Monday. I love you, and I look forward to celebrating with you. Thank you.
Awesome. Happy birthday to your wife. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge the City of Boston Veteran Services Department for hosting an exceptional Operation Stand Down event earlier this week. Veterans across greater Boston came together on City Hall Plaza and talked to providers that assisted veterans with housing, with legal assistance, medical care, other social services, and benefits. It was a wonderful event. I know Counselor Murphy was there, the mayor was there, but I had the opportunity to speak at the event and highlight the important role veterans play in our city, in our country, and I did say that I'm going to continue advocating for veterans at the federal, state, and city level to ensure that our budget always respects our veterans and military families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President, and it was great to go to that event. I also really loved the opportunity to go and sponsor the Mission Hall Post's annual golf tournament in Norwood, so a little farther out of district date than I usually go, but really exciting. So thank you, Counselor Flynn, for your work with veterans. I wanted to shout out the Fifth Annual Citywide Public Forum from the NAB Annual. This is the NAB Homelessness Task Force, is on Wednesday, October 9. And the NAB Homelessness Task Force does such great work. They're convening a conversation with Dr. Howard Ko, my predecessor Kenzie Bach, and Joshua Cuddy on Wednesday, October 9 at Rab Hall in Copley Square Library. It's from 6:00 to 7:30. This is an incredible event. Every time I've been, the level of conversation just really orients you into what are, what are we dealing with at the city level? And the name of the event is ensuring everyone has a home in Massachusetts, Bold City and State Initiative. So excited and hope my colleagues will join us at that event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, I want to call attention to Deployables Day, which is a citywide training exercise for temporary flood protection. This is the first of its kind in the city. We always talk about how Boston is the most, one of the most vulnerable cities to coastal flooding, and this is the first exercise of the Environment Department, Emergency Management, to demonstrate what would happen when a hurricane hits Boston. I always say that it's a matter of when, not if. And so I think it's happening. I just want to get the time right. It's Friday, September 27 at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's happening at City Hall Plaza, Infanual Hall, and other select locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just, we have JP Open Studios this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's a wonderful event. I urge everyone to come out, and there's a photograph hanging in my office that I got when I visited Open Studios last year. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. If there are no more announcements, we are on to memorials. And before we begin, I just want to repeat the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline Number. Since we are in the month of September, which is Suicide Awareness Month, people can access it by dial-
I urge everyone to come out, and there's a photograph hanging in my office that I got when I visited Open Studios last year. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. If there are no more announcements, we are on to memorials. And before we begin, I just want to repeat the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline Number. Since we are in the month of September, which is Suicide Awareness Month, people can access it by dialing 988 nationwide, and it provides 24/7 confidential support for individuals in distress, as well as resources for loved ones and professionals available 365 days a year. You can also go to 988lifeline.org, or you can text 988. And there's also the Samaritans, a local support service dedicated to helping those struggling with suicidal thoughts. They provide 24-hour helpline at 877-870-4673. The more we talk about it and the more we elevate resources, the more we're able to help those who are in need and in crisis. If any of my colleagues would like to speak on behalf of someone who has passed, now is the moment. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to mention a few neighbors from South Boston, including Robert O'Connor, who was a proud veteran. I also want to recognize Karen Stanley, who was active in South Boston neighborhood organizations, including the South Boston Street Festival. And I know Counselor Murphy is going to speak on a mutual friend of ours, Richie Lito, a Boston police officer, retired, United States Marine, retired. Three outstanding leaders in our community, three outstanding neighbors that contributed so much to the city and to our country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I first wanted to uplift my Uncle Charlie, who we buried last week, who was a proud veteran and worked the last more than 20 years at the VA, and thank the VA for the service they gave him in his last days, and thank Mayor Gormley for doing a wonderful job at his ceremony last week. Also wanted to uplift Richie Lito. This one's tough. If you knew him, you are lucky, you were definitely lucky enough to know him, you would love him. Proud father of five. I first was introduced to Mr. Lito. I had his youngest son, Mikey, 18 years ago. I was his teacher, youngest of five children. He was a proud father, a proud Marine. At that time, he was doing one of his many tours during wartime for serving and protecting our country, so thank you for always doing that. He started out as a BHA Housing Cop. They missed him, I know, when he transferred over to the Boston Police, and everyone still remembers the amazing work he did as the South End Community Service Officer. They missed him when he retired just two years ago, and during these last few years of retirement, you probably wouldn't find him at home. He was helping people in the neighborhood. I know Counselor Flynn would probably often see him around the neighborhood, always showing up when anyone needed help, if it was fixing the stove at a restaurant, if it was cleaning out someone's basement. When anyone called him, he was there. But he was also enjoying his two grandchildren, taking salsa, dancing lessons, or was part of the yacht club, but this past summer had a sailboat and was sailing, racing across Boston Harbor. So, was living life to the fullest, unexpectedly died as he was entering into St. Anthony's Shrine. He would go to church, the early Mass at St. Anthony's down town on Sunday morning. Thank you to those who tried to help him and just send him love to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, and my condolences to you and your family on the loss of your uncle. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise in recognition of a young man who was shot and killed in the Mildred Haley Apartments on Monday night. My thoughts go to, are, my thoughts are with his family and everyone in the Mildred Haley community. I don't think his name's been disclosed publicly yet, so I withhold that, but just to, you know, my thoughts are with everyone who's impacted by that.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. So, in addition to the names and people mentioned, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counselor Fitzgerald, Lilian Genie Cahill. On behalf of Counselor Flynn, Karen Stanley, founder of the South Boston Street Festival, vice president of the South Boston Chamber of Commerce, longtime South Boston community champion. And also on behalf of Counselor Flynn is Lilian Genie Fitzgerald Cahill. On behalf of myself and on behalf of the entire city council, Methuen Mayor Neil Perry. Michaela DePrince Ballerina. On behalf of counselors Flynn, Murphy, and Fitzgerald, Richie Lito, retired Boston police and retired U.S. Marine Corps. On behalf of Counselor Durkin and the entire Boston City Council, Shirley Demergion Duggan, grandmother of Eddie McGuire at BCYF. The chair moves that when the council adjourns, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. A moment of silence, please. The council is scheduled to meet again in the I and L chamber on Wednesday, October 2, 2024, at noon. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. If my colleagues will stay around and we can take photos of the retirees and also with Mass mentors briefly, I'd appreciate it. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council adjourned.